Technically past seven, but... The first thing on the agenda, you guys... Well, I guess you have to okay it because this is what we asked for. This is the agenda: the debit card, the work truck, the gate at the park, and a treasury.
And the sewer.
Yes.
Oh, that's okay.
Can we add anything on there or not?
No, I'm like, this question maybe you have to get...
We added, because we have three questions.
So, the first on the list is the debit credit card. You have to make a decision on that. And my trailer can explain that to you now.
I mean, I kind of explained a little bit. So, I got information about the credit card. So, we have to apply for it, and it's not technically through the bank, through a third party, but we can make payments to the bank if that's what we wanted to do. But it's $29 per card annually for a credit card. And then the percentage rate's 15.40%, and you have to pay within 25 days. So, there's that option. I mean, it still has the company name. You can set a limit. They put their name on it. So, there's that, or just the debit card.
It gets out of the general fund automatically.
Yeah, and I kind of told Gabe about it a little bit. I check the bank account almost every day. So, and I see purchases they make before they even give me their receipt. But we can set a limit. We can set restrictions on a debit card, too.
I think it's 500 right now.
But we can set restrictions on, like, purchases out of state. We can do all that, and it's a lot easier to give a debit card, but that's whatever you guys want to do.
I will say, we've never had a credit card, but always it's a debit card.
And all the restrictions on it. It can't be used out of state, so it's just ever a bribe charge it, money would go through.
That's true.
Unless the bribe charge is local, but that's rare. I make a motion that we get a debit card to our safe for the maintenance room. And are we just doing one for the two of them, or are we doing one for each of them?
No, they can use one.
I know, but...
They have nine names, so how do you know this?
They would prefer if they're going to use your card, they would have their name only, but it's up to how, whatever you guys want to do.
I think we should do one for each of them, and it would have their name, and then you can track back to which one used the card from where, why.
That's a motion, then.
Yeah.
Seconded.
Aye. And then we're going to have the max limitations on it, like, $500, because that...
I don't think we've ever had to use any more than that.
Yeah, that ought to cover what he is...
Yeah, we did. We did it once or twice, but we had to come down here and let the clerk call the bank and ask them to get it for us.
Yeah.
But there's no reason that you guys couldn't. Because, I mean, if you know that you're going to go to Pratt and/or something and spend more than $500, if you tell them before you leave, it's ready by the time you get to Pratt.
Which is one time bound, but it's one time anyway.
Yeah. Well, and I don't really either, but you just can test. And then there should be, like, a limit, like, $2,000 in 48 hours or something for limit on it. Or probably can set that limit. Lower than that, because how many times do you use it?
Either one month, go send samples, or 48 parts, run times, dread parts.
I'd say, see what you can do on how low you can set the limit on that.
Okay.
I think the one we got now, I think was a... I think it's a big purchase. I remember making about $900 for a pool. And like I said, we had to come down here and they had to call the bank, get it okay before... It was an online deal, so I had to get it okay before it would go through.
Yeah.
Okay, the next thing would be the work truck. Have you heard anything?
Work truck? Yeah, it's got a bracket and a steering column broke and a bushing or something out of it. Says it's going to be like $250 probably to fix it. That's for the shift room. If there's not the two or anything else, it would be one of the super fixes.
Go ahead and do it.
I mean, I think we got to. I went down the day after the meeting and disconnected the cable so they could put it in gear and drive it and stuff, because I knew what was wrong with it when they said what was going on. They can't drive it and stuff, but it is a kind of a safety hazard. It's not ride. But that way, it didn't have to be towed to get in.
Hell, we bought that used anyway. We knew that that wasn't going to last forever. And did you hear out?
Well, we really ought to look for a service truck or a pickup that we can put that net on at some point, but I don't know. It's a hurry right now, but...
Okay, you are the one that... Oh, okay, you said go ahead and do it. Right.
Do we need a motion on that?
Well, it is getting... I can okay it if it's a load, but...
It doesn't matter. We're here. I make a motion that we fix the maintenance truck and get the steering column fixed.
Seconded.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the next subject is the gate at the park. I don't know if you've talked to the boys about it already, but...
Yeah, I did.
You know the board? Megan?
Yeah.
Uh, you know, I went here last week cleaning sewer lines.
Oh, that's coming up on the next meeting. That's the next meeting.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
Okay. He's talking about a gate at the park because of what's going on down there.
Oh, the gate at the park. I haven't done too much or anything too much yet. We haven't moved or anything yet.
So, who can tell the girls what we were thinking of because of what's going on?
Well, Tuesday night, I went over with Skitzer and was helping Jeff load his pickup out to leave, to go to Montana. And we were loading a bunch of stuff, and one vehicle pulls in and pulls around there to the wellhouse. And Jeff says, "Hey, watch this. You owe me $10 if there's another vehicle there within 15 minutes." And that vehicle drives out, and another vehicle drives in there. And that vehicle drives out, and then the original vehicle drives in there and drives right back out, tearing out there sideways. It looks like they're doing drug deals at the wellhouse. Because one vehicle pulls in, sits there for a couple of minutes, and leaves. Then the next vehicle, and this happened twice. The first big, the original vehicle that pulled in there was, came back the second time and did the exact same thing. Pulled in there, left. Another vehicle pulled in there, left, and then the first vehicle. So, that one vehicle was there four times and left out of sideways twice. I think we've got some liability issues here. I'd like to see a gate to go up across the driveway that drives back around to the basketball court and to the wellhouse. I know that doesn't perfectly stop them, but...
Yeah, they'll go across the grass.
Well, then that is trespassing because they drove past a barrier.
Well, yeah.
It's legal to walk, but once a driveway is shut off, it is trespassing.
So, you're talking like a pole or something like, not a tug of war gate or maybe a cat gate?
Like what we have out there at the...
Brush side?
Brush side or something. And then if some kids want to go play, or somebody's going to have a gathering or something back there, they could check your key out. I don't see a problem with that, but I do see a problem with what's going on back there right now.
So, they could get you a bid or something, I mean, they could give you...
Or come up with an idea.
Yeah.
But, I mean, nothing's been done in years, so it's probably not a big hurry to do it, but... I think I'd like to see something done. I mean, what do people need to be driving back there at 12, 1 o'clock at night? And literally coming out of there sideways the whole way around the pool.
Well, that's drawing attention, John, which is kind of stupid, doing what you're doing.
What if we got, if we're in a county, maybe put some camera up around there?
Well, because we don't have Wi-Fi, we would probably have to go with a deer cam and send it straight to your phone, which are getting pretty damn good, really. I don't know. I think we should do something, either cameras or cameras or a gate or both or...
Does it happen every night?
I guess it happens a lot.
Someone in Freedom County set it there for a couple nights, hoping they'd procure it. They find a new place.
And I know they're going to just find a new place to do it, but, and that's fine. Just don't do it on its own property. We've got to look out for our liability issues.
On the last subject, when do we pay October bills?
In November.
Exactly. And did we not have a special meeting in October? Plus a regular meeting? So, when you got paid $30 for the special meeting, you were there. When you threw the check across the table and Tatum had to pick it up and told him to take the $10 off, you're cutting yourself out of $10 because you technically earned $30.
We didn't have a special meeting in October.
Yeah, right here.
It don't matter. It don't matter. I'm tired about hearing that meeting didn't pay you anything.
Well, you were the one that was complaining about the city clerks not doing their job.
That's okay.
I just wanted to quit attacking them. Yes, they got paid less months like you did. They got paid for the special meeting they came to in October. The one you were complaining about.
Oh, they got paid in November?
Yes.
For October?
Yes.
That doesn't make sense to me.
We always pay a month later.
No, that don't make sense.
Well, if you don't want to admit it, it's true. I've got the treasury report that shows it. I'm just waiting to quit attacking the city clerk.
They were not here in November.
They were not here for this, and they were here for this one.
Don't slam stuff down.
I can't because you're the one that has attacked them every time.
No, I didn't attack them. I showed the...
No, you did.
Did you get the paper?
Point of order.
Thank you.
It's on last month's deal. Why don't you go get last month's? The meeting we just had. This is not the meeting we just had.
No, but it's what gets paid in November.
I'm talking about the meeting they want to... We just had December's...
November is paid in December. You were complaining about them getting a special meeting thing right here.
They were gone last month when we got, had our meeting.
Okay, so it doesn't matter. I mean, if you're not worried about it.
I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about them getting paid for when they weren't here last month. You go back on last month's bills. Can you pull it out? That's not last month. Not this month that we just had.
November 23rd.
This is not the one we just had.
Yes, it is. I just took it out of the other room. I want you to quit attacking the clerks. They're doing their job. And this council can't ban you from the office if you keep it up.
I don't go to that office, so you don't need to go to that office. I haven't been to that office for a long time.
Quit wasting my time. Let's just move on.
She's the one that's wasting your time, not me.
Still with it.
It wasn't on the agenda, so I don't know why you brought it up.
It's right there.
That's fine. I'm tired of the attacking. Me is who I'm tired of.
Okay. Babe, do you want to set the next meeting for 7:20? That's 18 minutes.
Aye.
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 7:20.
Drive it up, head over. Drive it up, head over.
They posted it on Facebook.
We have time on. We have a little time. Yeah, piece of paper, piece of tape, please.
Paper.
Paper?
She's got paper. Just need a piece of tape.
7:20. One minute.
Right. Yeah.
About to...
Right.
About to...
We did post, we just didn't have the time on.
Right, so we just had to post it with the time.
Is somebody out there?
There.
Oh, okay.
I had something about a special video. Eddie, I don't even know where you... So... I think I spotted the pickup. I just don't know who it is. I've never seen any of these vehicles.
If you set up a deer cam, would that be able to get a license plate number, maybe? Because if I remember right, there's two entrances to the back area. You don't have to put two gates up.
One entrance.
You guys put 7:20?
Right.
Well, there's one around the pool, 7:25.
7:25, okay.
Because one that goes the pool.
I think a deer cam would be better. Maybe you could get a license plate then.
The problem is, you got to put it up high enough.
Yeah, I know. We had one there and it got stolen.
We've already had people in top of the wellhouse.
Well, see, the problem is when... So, if you mess with anything around wellhouses or...
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, it's totally shit thrown.
I'm surprised they don't donate it to water tower. It's more private, isolated.
I'm not going to say we haven't had people out there.
No, I'm just saying it's kind of weird.
I think there's quite a bit of traffic back there, too. I'm not sure we shouldn't look at a gate back there.
Yeah.
But then we're dealing with the bill on that one.
We even had deer cam.
I think camera would be good. Catch who's fucking doing it, get them arrested.
Yeah, if Reno County does anything.
True.
They're almost not interested, I think.
Yeah, unless they see it with their own two eyes, they don't care. They had video and it didn't do a bit of good.
The cops in Reno County are tired of getting the shit beat out of them. Arresting people, they get a cow 15 minutes later because of the judges we have in this county.
They get up, put the ink dries.
Yeah. Or they know that they've got warrants for them, and they show up for probation and take a bondsman with them.
Yeah.
That's why I always told cops, "If somebody breaks into my house, by heck, they have a knife, anything, I'll shoot them dead. Call you, tell them, come get them in the morning. Fuck it. Be done with it." Or, you know, I hate to say it, it's about useless.
We're at the bottom of the counter, that's why.
Uh huh. They ever get that semi?
I'm not sure you have the right to protect yourself even anymore.
I know, right?
I'll take my chance. I'll go to jail.
They ever get that, forget it. Semi cleaned up, buried outside of Arlington. Holy crap. That's why I was making a joke earlier, because it was full of cuties.
Yeah, I heard that a bad semi wreck in the county, I think, was picking it up on pallets and stuff. Might as well give it out if it's any good, give it oranges.
By law, anything in a wreck is supposed to be condemned in a sense of...
Yeah, like when the swan truck went wrecked. I bet there was a lot of people grabbing steak
Well, I mean, heck, that...
Before they got there.
That truck a few years back that rear into that other truck after they hit the ditch over my mom's friggin' was full of, I think it was like...
Body armor.
Yeah, body armor. That's what it was. I was like, "Damn, just get, you know, forget a few cases, you know, I wouldn't care."
And they didn't let a case leave off that truck.
No. Well, I guess that accident happened at like 2:00 AM, and we came through at, what, 3:00, 3:30, and they were still cleaning it up like the next day. It was like, dang, it was bad. Uh, 3:00 in the afternoon yesterday, while you brought pizza home.
They had cuties all over by that fence and everything.
That junkyard, yeah.
Well, you remember when the woman driver went and had one cutie and was all over the curb down there in Arlington?
We did that.
Okay, cuties time. Okay, Urban.
That mayor with your wife, we're playing sewer line. And identified a couple of private lines that's growing full of roots. And we got one spot in our sewer main that's got a chunk out the bottom. We got this quote, they sent a quote. We're mayor to repair it, but we think we can dig it up and fix it ourselves.
Just take a section out and put another section in?
Yeah.
Yeah. You'll actually get them $4,000.
All that's money. And that's just a worker fixing a line where they think it's coming down. We said we need to pay that fixer, so we're going to see them. As best as probably can, we've got two private lines that's growing full of roots. And we need to either, homeowner needs to either get them fixed or put their line in there, or at the very least, we need to dig them up at the taps and try to get the roots out by the tap before they get into our sewer main. And I believe one of them is here to talk to you about that, which suggests that...
We can help you if you need help.
Suggests that they talk to the council, if you might let us see if they might help them later and let them make payments or whatever. Something was brought up once before, or whatever it was. But their sewer line, one of them is 100% plugged up and applied, the other said it's 90% according to what the mayor's got on their video. Just whatever you want to do on that, the way you want them there to fix it or let us fix it. It's going to have to be fixed anyway. Kind of the same way with their line. If we don't do anything else, we need to dig them up in the alley and try to get the roots out by the main board, just throw them into the main.
What street is it where it needs fixed on the pipe?
It's in the alley between Willow and Burns. That's where our next sewer main is.
Yeah, how long will it take to get a set of pipes?
On the sewer main?
They're fixing the hole, did you say?
So, is that something?
Have to get it okay and...
I know.
And maybe it'll be probably about eight foot deep or... It may take their, their kit that's in there. And let's set out the section, put the section back in. Or fix it. After we put that, put a piece back in there. But we don't, no, we don't do it yet. I didn't see how that exactly is. It's just like, on the video, it looks like a little triangle about three inches by six inches long, which I can't real get up. It's hard to tell because there's still water in there on the video. Plus, you don't know how many is cracked down there. But we believe we can, we can fix it a lot cheaper than the mayor's, though. If we got to dig it up, the mayor, they can put a liner in there and line that part up. I'm guessing that's what they do. We really don't have any source on the main. We got to get it fixed, of course. Bleeding in, if it starts bleeding, it's going to have to be fixed, so we don't really have a source on it yet. It's up to you whether you want us to do it or you want the mayor to do it.
I mean, I assume these other two taps are pretty crucial to get done pretty fast, too, if they walked off that pad. Are they backed up to the house, or do we know, or...
I know, I know one of them is for sure, and I'm assuming both of them are. I've heard that they're slowly draining, and you can see a little drip, a water dripping through it. There ain't much going through the water, I mean. But like I said, if nothing else, we need to dig it up in the alley, pull the roots out, and forward back to the edge of the alley and clean it out before they get in the main anyway. I mean, it's up to the homeowner where they want to deal with it, set up a payment plan, let it deal with it, or whatever, just you guys.
And if my question would be, that's three thorough projects, and that need to happen fairly quick.
Yeah. How about you?
Are you guys got time to get all three of them done fairly quick, or should we sort of...
I don't know what's going to happen the next day or during now.
Well, I get that.
Well, we got to read. We got a first one coming up, so we got a couple of days in it, we... And then I've got to read meters next week, so it'd be a week or two project probably to clean off all three of them, if we get all three of them. And like I said, we listen to them, and they can talk to the council, and we could probably help them out, put their line in, get them back on sewer going and working again, and make payments, kind of similar like we did down here for the water meter and this and that. But that's for them to talk to you about, for you guys to discuss. And like I said, if we don't do anything else, we need to dig it up, clean it out close to the main anyway, to keep the roots and get that root.
I make the motion with going to executive session for fifteen minutes. With council, mayor, and the right to call a clerk and maintenance. If needed.
How many minutes?
Fifteen.
You're fed.
Hi Ken.
Good evening.
All right. That quote you got? That four thousand, does that include everything?
It means figure everything. No, it says, it says sewer main.
Oh. I was curious about that. Where, it's by James's old trailer, one Charles bio?
Near the part that missing out the sewer main in that area right in there.
Yeah, it's uh, down before the trailer, it's like, I know, I have a good idea of where they're talking about.
The reason I'm asking is Ms. Patty, who lives across the street. She has a handicap toilet, so she removed the seat and put plastic on there. She said, oh my god, it's a good thing I ran in there, because I tried to suck the plastic through. So I didn't think it was on our end, I, you know, I kind of figured it was on the other end.
No, I'm guessing it's dally, the trailer's off, but.
Yeah.
They were playing it. Blowing up there. That's why they got the noise on the door.
Yeah. Well, she didn't have a toilet lid to put down, so she put plastic on it. I seasoned her, I said, well, it's a good thing you weren't sitting on the toilet at that point. It would've tried to suck you in.
No, not that much suction, probably.
Oh no, she said that bag went quick.
Yeah?
I don't think it could pull a human down, but you know, it scared her.
I mean, you're talking, uh, you know.
I wonder if that might.
Make a hole in a toilet, yeah.
I'm wondering if that might be contributing to why you always had water in that yard until they dug that ditch area. Because the drainage always sucked there.
No, Maine had nothing to do, they're talking about the alley.
Yeah.
That's on the roadside.
Yeah, okay. Ooh! Are you feeling better? I heard you were sick last time.
Yeah, I had some, well, Linda was talking about how some twenty-four hour flu thing was going around, and I think that's what I got.
That stomach bug's been going around?
Yeah.
Hey bud.
Not COVID's going around. My husband, our husband, got a hand to put the face for. And now she's got COVID on, now it's bad.
I'm not starting to hear that.
Yeah, she's a tough cookie, she's ready to go. She's made her peace.
I don't hear well, what are they in executive session deciding now?
About the sewers.
I still don't hear well.
About the sewers that are backed up and that got roots in them.
About the sewers that are backed up and then have roots in them?
Yeah.
We need to go to executive session to discuss the sewer system?
I'm trying to think of a way to have the landowner go on a payment plan and get their portion of it, I think.
That's what we told him anyway, they come talk to the council. The council probably might agree to us going in.
I'm gonna have trouble with you, I can't hear you at all. You gotta use your outlaw voice here.
That is my, the poor voice.
Try to use your preacher voice. Either that or shake off, trim off part of that mustache so I can read lips. You got that one lip pretty well covered up, so. They get a bid back from, from about the swimming pool?
Haven't heard back yet.
Haven't heard back from that.
They want a call, but they were, the guy we need, the guy we needed to talk to was out of the office, so we hadn't heard anything back yet.
And I certainly do not hear well in this room, but I don't know why. Hear better other places than I do in this room.
We're to the summertime and air conditions going.
Oh yes, oh yes, and I don't hear at all.
Should I get some flashcards or anything?
I'm sorry?
Should I get some flashcards ready then?
They'll be a good thing.
I'm glad you found out about the meeting, I head down and get over to your wife.
Hi, this is your husband. Uh, got off the combine about a half an hour ago. We shut down, well, I shut down, we're still going, and I stopped by the city mission meeting here, so. In case you're, in case you're wondering if I was lost. Well, that's hard to say, they're in executive session right now, that can go on a long time. Or then, or they can come back from executive session and then return.
Oh, and bring snacks.
And do it again, and again and again, so. I just don't know. If you want me home at a particular time, I can always get up and leave.
He might want to show him what he missed.
Oh, sounds, sounds terrific. All right, very good. Thank you, yep. Yes, ma'am.
Did, I have a question. Did they actually make a vote on the debit cards or not?
Yes, they're going with the debit.
Well, I heard them make a motion, I didn't.
Well, I think the interest rates were just outrageous on a credit card, and they go.
So they did make a vote?
If you had a moment, I'd love to talk.
Oh, yeah.
So, okay. Well, did August come outside?
Yeah, please.
Basically, we're in the second special meeting. I guess. I think maybe they ought to give Rose a room so she can handle executive meetings or special meetings. I guess he can hear it, okay, out there.
And it's mostly, it's not really the one. We need to go in. And it's mostly, it's not really the one. We need to go in, that's what it's for. And it's not, it's not. We need an audience. And so they talk like this, no.
I don't know if it's easy to watch this, you know?
No. The mayor's got a call for us. He decides he can do it not, but I just, I just love it. And I explained.
How long do we go into the second session?
I have two minutes. Yeah, seven thirty-five.
I waited till I heard Linda's wheels hit the lot very.
So I get upstairs at like seven fifty?
Well, they're not fifteen seconds, so. But she can start walking there now. So did you lose rock, paper, scissors?
Yeah.
Did you lose rock, paper, scissors? Time to be the one to come?
No, never. Never couldn't get away from the bathroom or anything.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Well, you're not being very home or anything.
Well, we passed him on the way back from Pratt, so.
They took a bucket and rolled all the paper with them, but they didn't know we could make it home.
It's just getting everybody. That's why Coleman's been home for two days.
Yeah, you don't get too far away from the bathroom and sit in there. There's a time to look at, that's where you can go.
Yeah, I'll put a picture from the round, I'll send you the steer. I'll tell you that.
I'll tell you that stuff. Well, you came out. I thought it was about smoke.
Okay, well, I guess. Just to get the show on the road. Since time could be an issue on this project. I'd make the motion that we spend the four thousand dollars to have.
Hold.
Wait.
Okay, we should just pay what?
That's all right.
Next time.
Still floor.
Does the motion stand, or is we thinking? I rescinded it right now, I'm sorry. I'm thinking. Seventeen weeks, is that right?
Four weeks.
Four weeks?
Three and a half.
Okay. July three, that was the second month in a row.
So that's January eight.
Yeah. Because that first is on the memory, right? Next meeting is January eighth.
Do you want to come talk to us? Uh. We're trying to figure out how to work with you guys. On the fairness of. Fifteen months ago.
I mean, my, my thing was is, I'm married to Sierra.
Yeah.
Better talk about. She was told that if we don't get it fixed, you guys are going to report it to the city or hospital. That's what she was told earlier today.
Well, technically, if your sewer's not working, you can be turned in for, uh, god, I have to say, or you can be condemned.
Yeah, and, and we get that.
And if the sewer's not draining into the limits, there aren't, but they do stop, I mean, as long as they handle it, the time is there.
Yeah. And that's all I'm asking is just for a little bit of time. I, I, you don't even have to do it for me.
Well.
I just need time.
So the question is, is how do we help you? So they camera the line. And they find that there are roots coming to. The main.
Yeah.
And we feel that maybe, maybe not have a little obligation. Of roots in the alley. But if the root past the alley. Under your guys' side. Do you guys want us to stop at the edge of the alley? Or do you want us to continue? Um. On your guys' side? And then you guys just sign a contract with the city to pay it off in payments?
I mean, we could do that. I've talked to her because she is the official homeowner.
Okay.
And I could let someone know in the office tomorrow.
Yeah, the office.
That's what, we're just trying to figure out how to.
Help you because we all have our problems.
Yeah.
How far did they go, as, as it stands, or just how do you?
I mean, even, you know, just altered it out, just to clean it out. I mean, it flows pretty decently right now. I mean, we don't have it backing up into our utilities anymore. It, it flows now.
Okay.
It just current.
Is it coming up down in the yard?
No.
Okay.
No. Uh, I have the, uh, vent tube off of the cleanup because when they did the house and made the cleanup separate from the vent tube. And so I just have to put the vent tube back on. But other than that, I mean, I dug out around it, I mean, I've personally made it overflow on purpose because I, at first, I thought it just flowed. So I filled it up with water and I went in there with a, uh, a smaller water.
The city just wants to help you all it can.
Okay. But, um. She, she, she'd be willing to be payments with me.
Yeah.
We're just, we just don't want it being condemned because.
No, that's not.
We, we have no way to go.
Believe me, there would be plenty of time in the future.
Not just a big thing, like if it's just like, if it, and I don't even know, you know, where's that character dealing it. You see how we get this. Um. If it was ignored for thirty or forty-five days or something and it becomes a health hazard of it overflowing in the backyard or something, then. That's where the state says. You got a big issue.
Yeah.
But, I mean, those.
Someone say it to the edge of the alley, they probably know better than what it's going to take. And then get with them. Have an idea. Of what possible is it? Because all the women have gone.
Yes.
He would get it, because he said it's going down. Later, so I'm looking.
Yeah, if you want to back and flush the hole, as many times as I want, it keeps flooding. As a stop bug or as a backfill.
So maybe you would just get in from the main to the after edge. Or even, yeah. Just to have some of the augers.
If I don't fix it, then I can at least write an order. I just need a little bit of time.
Well, the issue there is, is when we open a hole and leak a hole to do it. Um. What's all in your liability is. When we dig a hole, fix the problem and fill the hole back in.
Okay.
In a fairly reasonable amount of time. I mean. We have found that we've had several residents at town rent augers. And they not take care of the tree roots in this time. So I don't know that an auger is.
Yeah, mine was orange percolate and we, I had completely replaced mine.
Okay.
And that's where, I mean, I think we can try and work with you, especially on payments, it'd be better than having to go out and. Hire a company to come in and replace it all, and you gotta come up with a thing at all.
Yeah, because Ed, Ed quoted us a really high price.
I'm sure.
Because when they came, when Ed first came up, they thought that maybe our sewer line jumped into an old septic system. Because he said he just kept feeding it line and it felt like it was just standing up there in a box. But he said he only went a hundred and fifty feet. I would imagine there's probably five hundred and fifty feet from the thing up to the sewer for the main.
Well, that's just something that, uh, you might talk with her about. I think that's the route that we're willing to go with, uh. That we would dig it up at the main, clean the roots out in the alleyway. And then, uh. We can put it back. Or if you guys want to sign the contract to pay from your property line over. Um. Then we would handle it.
Yeah, I'm sure she would.
From there in on payments.
Yeah, I'm sure she would. She would do, I, I know I would. That's why I don't have a lot of time to do a lot anymore.
Yeah.
And another baby on the way, money's really tight. But.
Yeah.
And another baby coming?
You.
You know how those are made?
Yes.
Uh, I think that's what, anything else?
Well, except that it's like flowing, he's not going to issue, so he won't like be suppressing it until the.
Right. That's what.
That way he has some time, the hallway is not going up.
Yeah, because then I'll start my new job until after the baby that you're here. Because I'll, because the lady who does the orientations, they'll get back to eight of January. And then she, we're not doing anything until Monday following that. Which is fifteenth, I think it was.
Okay.
I mean, if you're not, if it's not backing up or anything.
Yeah, no, it's not backing up in there. And we don't have like a hundred sewer stone or anything. Like, so I can flush the hole five, six times around, it just goes on there.
Uh.
So you don't function after a year?
I have to continue with this. So as long as things are working.
Yeah, like we keep it operated on if they get sort of certain things.
Yeah, you, like, not having sewer either.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and we don't use a lot of water as it, I mean, showers, dishes, toilet. So we don't even drink, say, we're already by our own water.
No, just to check, clean it up every few days or something, for sure, it's not bad enough. Wrong, oh no.
I understand, I understand. I'm not a, but I don't understand what you're saying.
Well, I don't either.
Would you like to step back down, Jerry, as there kind of?
Yeah.
Talking.
On that, on that one, is that the one that they were saying was real walked off or not quite so walked off?
I think both pretty real walked off. I think it is, according to what Mayor had on their video, it's like ninety percent.
When you get to the main part there, you can pull some roots out though, right?
Well, can you get roots, especially near that?
Well, yeah.
Well, we hope we can, we pull out what we can, lead to the alley line.
So that might help some.
But that row of trees is sewer line, going, clocking, goes right down the row of trees, so I'm sure there's probably roots all the way down there. Be my guess.
No doubt, probably. Did you say how many feet?
Hmm?
Did you say how many feet there was? Where, like, you're seventeen foot, where we found it at?
Well, that's the, the other sewer line.
Oh, the other one's okay.
About seventeen roots in man, either manhole. One or different block.
So. Once you get on their property line, the sewer line follows a line of trees?
Yeah, fence line and a bunch of trees growing up there.
What kind of fence line?
Hmm?
What kind of fence line?
Woven wire, maybe.
Uh, the thing is. I don't think it's woven wire, uh, you know, like hog fence? It's not quite as thick and all the way around. I mean, it's something we could easily take down if needed. And we don't have any animals that go outside anymore.
Yeah, I can just assume though that if there's a, if the trees go up that line. Probably going to be rooted for quite a ways. Um. As I said, from there, if they want us to handle it from the alley up in front, do they sign a contract to, to do payments?
Make a motion?
No, you're gonna have to.
No, no. That's their motion. And she gave a motion, you're going to approach it yourself, their turn.
Um. So we want to review this on first houses, if the other hospitals are going to have to learn to control this on that.
We should let them contact us, right, on that?
But you have to make the motion that if both of them would be done, the other day.
If they can, yes.
We're gonna have to bring the alley out, the alley part, but if they want to have us, we're qualified in that, we're gonna have to sign a contract to do it on payments.
The trees.
What trees is it, mad, further?
On the left side of the court, there was those trees that went down.
Oh, in the back?
Yeah.
Okay.
I was. That's all the joy. The tree, I mean, that's a tree by the tree.
No, I mean, the, the one is my.
Oh, okay. There's an alley there, there's someone.
Well, that's.
Cheryl. This is a crack. Cheryl, it's, it's in the back, I, I checked.
Okay.
You and I on the same page?
My friend. But Nick said he has a pen in trouble with the water.
No, it's, he thinks he's got a big tree in the very back by the alleyway. I was on the same page, you were.
I told you.
Her brain is looking fine. She wanted to make sure there's no water there.
Because Zeno had a little tree root next to our sewer, this little one. Because, you know, and the little tree root next to ours, sewer, there's that little one.
Because he's talking about... But that'd be later on. I know when we moved to Trump, they had to dig out our, we had it higher. Like, it was just built in nineteen forty-four, that's why it's blue boy.
Where did they?
Yeah, our, the way we live on the corner is nineteen hundred.
Well, the main, that house is where it is now on, on Part Three.
Uh-huh.
There was one that was first one there, and it was built, moving under there, and just, I disconnected it, pulled it out, laid it in the house. So, I got a bunch of old castrated pipes and stuff just laying there.
My bad bedroom used to be part of a tiny house, they cut it in half. My family got one half, and that's there.
Ireland lives in one, some have one, and they live at the house. We're not gonna fix it up, I just got it wired. Now I'm doing the housework.
Yeah, well, Cheryl, like I said, that's what she was worried about, trees, but she didn't know.
What?
Trees that was. And next door, like, why is it a rule? It's very, yeah. You done solved it?
Yeah.
He likes to play that radio once a year.
How soon could, if mayors go back crack, how soon?
I don't know what I do. Maybe we just got the coach this morning, and they, you know, haven't helped anybody. Just whenever they got it on their schedule, I don't have any idea.
Is it him or is it her?
Do they have two different teams, or just one team? Did they ever found out?
I thought it was sort of a package.
I don't think he heard you went up.
No.
Irma, wanted to ask you something.
Say what?
Do they have two different teams that does that, or?
Well, they got a couple different groups, but I don't know which one does what.
Yeah.
Does the coach good for thirty days? They don't say, when they could even bring it up, it'd have to be scheduled.
The coach good for thirty days. I'm gonna start singing, and you ain't gonna like that, because I don't...
I'm gonna... Hey, Ever, do you have the, if you guys fix the crack, Erin, sorry. If you guys fix the crack, do you have the pieces to go in there?
Probably not all everything. We have to see what we got to show. Let's say we don't know how big a piece we have to cut out, or anything else, so we're gonna go get it.
See, I thought it was those big brown cement things, and they come in sections.
Well, yeah, the way you're gonna get in, I don't know.
Don't have any of those.
We just have to put these in there, and then lock it in, everything else.
Sounds like a complication.
I'm gonna make the motion that we, that we line it with Meyer, or Me- Herr, Mayor, for four thousand dollar glue, and then it's fixed. Did they give a glance?
Hold on a second.
Who you seconded that?
You.
Chris.
You changed your voice, Chris?
I think Chris seconded it.
He said, um... You heard, we did it?
Of course.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah.
And then?
I make a motion on the other two root issues on the main, that we go ahead and proceed to dig them up, and clean from the main to the edge of the city right away of the alley. And then give the, assess it from there, and give the homeowner an option to sign a contract and continue replacement farther needed up to the landowner.
Hold on a second, did... I'm letting them write.
Don't figure it out.
You really just need to just have it to the minutes that the city's gonna take care of it from the main to the edge of the right away. And then assess it, and if the homeowners want us to continue because they can see roots farther, we will continue when they sign the contract by the landowner.
I will then change anything.
No, we didn't. I signed in yet, so why didn't we? I, I, the last...
Aye, wait a guys.
I move your turn.
Okay.
Aye.
Aye.
I heard you can get better.
You what?
I maybe you can get better.
I have to go back and check drives, uh, feed two bottles.
You and I are on the same page. Yeah, he says, he's got a big one in the back. Thank you, Jared. So, you and I are on the same page.